Welcome, everyone, to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council. Today is January 15th, 2019. I'd like to ask everyone to please take a moment to silence all electronic devices. For tonight's invocation, we call on Councilmember Harold Owens.
Dear Heavenly Father, we ask for your presence in this meeting tonight and all the city council meetings in the future. We ask that you help each of us to determine the factors which are most important in making decisions which benefits our citizens. Let us learn to humble ourselves, to work as one, and to agree to disagree if needed, but always remember our primary role was to make our city a better place to live. In your name we pray, amen.
We have a number of recognitions this evening. We're going to start by calling forward Laura Michael. Laura, there you are.
Do you want me to go here?
Yep, yep. Do you want to share a little about the recognition?
Standing here?
Yep.
Okay. Never done this before.
You're doing great.
Good evening. I'm Laura Michael. I'm the program coordinator for Burlington Animal Services. For those of you who may not be familiar with Animal Services, we operate the shelter facility here in Alamance County. We're responsible for sheltering, care, and rehoming of stray and surrendereded animals here in this county. We have a terrific staff that does amazing work there every single day. I have so much respect for all of my coworkers. But we also depend on our volunteers, and we just simply cannot do this work without them. And we're very blessed and fortunate to have some of the best volunteers you could ever ask for anywhere. They always help us in so many different capacities. But this young man is really extraordinary. His name is Aaron Barr. He is a senior at Eastern Alamance High School. He joined, started volunteering with us about two years ago. As soon as he turned 16, which is the minimum age, he joined us, and he is just a terrific, dedicated, active volunteer. I always say, I wish I could clone this guy because he is amazing. He helps us in so many different capacities, whether it's cleaning kennels on a weekend at eight o'clock in the morning. I don't know too many teenagers that want to do that. He just does amazing work with our dogs. He helps us at off-site events in just so many different ways. So we nominated him for the United Way Volunteer Award this year, and he won. He won the Outstanding Youth Volunteer for Alamance County, and we're pretty proud of that. He, on top of being a senior in high school, he has a part-time job, and he's active in scouting. And he just received this past Saturday his Eagle Scout Award. His Eagle Scout project was actually to benefit us. He held a 5K race and raised $600 for our medical care fund. So he is an awesome young man, and he's got a great future ahead of him. Unfortunately, he'll leave next, in August, I guess, sometime and go away to college, but we're so happy for him. We know he's going to have a terrific future. He plans to be a vet. So we're very proud of him, and give it to you.
Awesome. While I hold these step forward, Aaron, on behalf of the city council, it's my honor to present you this proclamation proclaiming whereas Burlington Animal Services relies on volunteers to help facilitate the improved outcomes for all pets brought to Burlington Animal Services. And whereas Mr. Barr has made an incredible impact over the two years of volunteer work at Burlington Alamance Services, Burlington Animal Services, and whereas in addition to his obligation as a senior at Eastern Alamance High School, scouting and working a part-time job, Mr. Barr has performed hundreds of hours of volunteer service at Burlington Animal Services. And whereas while volunteering at Burlington Animal Services, Mr. Barr has provided holiday and weekend support, including kennels and feeding animals, has worked at off-site adoption events, fostered pets, and worked patiently to socialize dogs and teach them invaluable obedience skills. And whereas Mr. Barr has recently earned the rank of Eagle Scout, organized a 5K event to raise money for Burlington Animal Services Medical Care Fund as his Eagle project, and was able to donate $600 to the fund as a result of his efforts. And whereas Mr. Barr is known as the B.A.S. Dog Whisperer, as his calm and confident demeanor has been instrumental in socializing and training dogs so that they will become attractive to potential adopters and thus find forever homes. And whereas the United Way of Alamance County recognized Mr., sorry about that title, we'll get that fixed out in a bit, Mr. Barr for his final volunteerism, for his volunteerism with a 2018 Outstanding Youth Volunteer Award. Now therefore, the Burlington City Council is hereby deemed it an honor and pleasure to extend this proclamation in recognition of Aaron Barr for his selfless dedication to improving outcomes for pets in Alamance County throughout his volunteerism at Burlington Animal Services. The City of Burlington is grateful for your generous donation of time and talent. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to call my fellow councilmembers forward. They've gotten very special recognitions again. And in honor of how special this recognition is, we're mixing things up a little bit. I'd also like to call our city clerk the name of our. We wouldn't be where we are today without this amazing woman, and I think it's up to all of us to share our respects and gratitude to this proclamation.
Whereas Ms. Renee Ward is a lifelong resident of Alamance County and has been an active member of the community her entire life. And whereas Ms. Ward has served as city clerk in the City of Burlington since 2012 and maintained membership and good standing in the North Carolina Association of Municipal Clerks and the International Institute of Municipal Clerks and holds the designation of Certified Municipal Clerk.
And whereas during her time as city clerk, she has led efforts to digitize city council meeting agendas, live train city council meetings, and serves as an integral part of the creation of the City Citizen Request Application, Burlington Connected. Whereas Ms. Ward began her career in 1990 at the Burlington Police Department, serving in a supportive role to the police administration, where she will continue in her public service as the Senior Administrative Assistant to the Police Chief and Command Staff.
Whereas in addition to Ms. Ward's role in the City of Burlington, she has served in leadership roles for Alamance County's Tom McClellan and the way of Alamance, dedicating a tremendous amount of hours to each organization and making positive impacts in the community with promoting programming of each organization thereof. Whereas her dedicated and professional demeanor and her impressive work ethic continues to be shown through her service at the City of Burlington and the community.
Now therefore, I, Ian Baltus, on behalf of the Burlington City Council, hereby extend this proclamation in honor and appreciation for Renee Ward for her seven years of service in the City of Burlington in the capacity of city clerk.
Well, I obviously hired her, so that was the reason for that.
I should also mention that Councilmember Kathy Hikes is not with us today because she is under the weather. We also have a recognition, I believe we have some folks from Leadership Alamance here. If y'all could stand and introduce yourselves, just to put you on the spot. We appreciate our Leadership Alamance folks.
Clint Chapel.
I'm Ginger Keanavai.
Leah Clapp.
Melanie Gordon.
Thank you so much for choosing us as your local government meeting to attend.
And who do you guys work for?
Oh, work.
Child Scout.
Jennings Brown and Chapel and Sheriff.
Burlington Christian Academy.
Ralph Scott Life Services.
Home Hill.
I understand we also have scouts from Troop Seven with Grove Park Baptist. Y'all here fulfilling a merit badge requirement?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Would you all mind introducing yourselves?
Very much. We're working on citizenship in the community.
Excellent.
And it's a required merit badge.
Well, thank you for being here.
All right, thank you.
Now at this time, I'd like to call on our city manager for a couple more recognitions.
I'm going to invite two of our newest colleagues to come forward and get to do some couple of introductions. So if Jay Mevin and Al Cablay would come up, two of our newest department heads, we'd want to make sure and introduce them to the council and to the community. So I'm going to start with Jay Mevin. Jay is our new inspections director for the city. Started with us on December 31st, 2018. Jay previously served as assistant fire chief and was our fire marshal. He's been with the City of Burlington and the Fire Department and Animal Services Department for a combined total of 10 years. Jay's a native of Burlington, has a bachelor's degree in fire and emergency services administration. He's also currently working on his master's degree in public affairs. He also holds a probationary North Carolina Level Two Building Certificate, a standard North Carolina Level Three Fire Inspector Certificate, a North Carolina Level Three Fire and Life Safety Educator Certificate, and has also finished the School of Government's Effective Supervisory Management course. Jay's also active in the North Carolina Fire Marshals Association and the Alamance County North Carolina Burn Children's Foundation where he serves as president. He's also a graduate of the John Maxwell International Maxwell Certification Program for Leadership Coaching, Speaking, and Training, and does in-house training for our city staff on a host of leadership topics. Jay's well-known in the community. Everyone's familiar with him. He has made himself known for lots of reasons, but he's had the opportunity to work in our public education group in fire and has organized for many years the Fire Citizens Academy. So he knows folks all over the city and has a fan club that literally spans the entire city. We're happy to have Jay here now, working with us every day at City Hall. And he was, for 14 days, he was our newest department head, and then Al came. So we're also, I was going to say, we're thrilled to have Jay as our second newest department head on our leadership team. So if anyone would give Jay a round of applause and welcome him to the table. So next is Al Cablay. Al started with the city on December 17th. Al spent the majority of his career in California. He has over 40 years' experience in municipalities, working both in public works and engineering. 20 years of experience serving as a public works director or some similar title in various cities in California. His most recent stop as a city was in Pico Rivera, California. Al holds a master's degree in business, has a bachelor's degree in civil engineering, and a number of public works-related certificates. He's very active with the American Public Works Association. Al retired from council-horny municipal work and worked as a consultant in California for a number of years, and had the benefit of basically serving as an intra-public works director across a handful of cities in California. So we're thrilled to have that experience and perspective from so many different communities coming to join us. He's gotten settled here in North Carolina, and I think the thing that he and his colleagues are having the most fun is talking about how sad that Al missed our 12-inch snowfall in early December. I think he got here about a week, one week, one week after the snowfall, and obviously that was on the top of public works list. When we did interview Al, we did ask him about snow plans, and he said he didn't know much about that, but if we had wildfires or earthquakes, he was our guy. So we hired him and figured there was some sort of transference there between wildfires and snowfalls. We'll figure that out as we go. As you get to know Al, you'll see what we've already learned is he's a very personable and outgoing person. He's spent a lot of time, since he's arrived, getting to know our staff and conducting some ride-alongs with staff and getting to know the community. So again, we're thrilled to have Al on our team as one of our two newest members of our leadership team. So again, if you'd join me in welcoming Al, please.
This time, we have a remembrance, which I'll also call on the city manager, Arden Watkins.
Just for the record, Jay Mevin has an MPA class in Greensboro tonight, and I told him, this did not get in my classes, still haven't got it. So sad news to share is city employee William Sharp, who folks in the department call him Willie, who is 47 years old and lives in a snow camp, passed away suddenly on January 2nd. I think he's already kind of made the news, but we wanted to take just a moment tonight and remember William. He was a native of Alamance County, went to Southern High School, worked in our streets division, and was our number one, sort of top concrete finisher, and that's the reason we hired him originally, and he absolutely proved what we thought when we hired him. Also served as a brick mason for some of our projects when we have that need for work. Was also a heavy equipment operator, and as everybody knows, we certainly appreciate snowplow drivers, but he was one of the leaders. We sent out our snowplows in four truck teams, and he was the leader of one of those teams. So he's going to be greatly missed by the public works staff, and his colleagues are certainly sad to learn of his passing earlier this month. Avid hunter, fisherman, outdoorsman, and actually even made his own knives. I think I'll provide counsel with a little story about some of the knives he's made, but I understand none of his coworkers, he made knives for them, including Blair Thompson, our street superintendent. So they have something to remember William by. But we wanted to take this moment this evening just to recognize his contributions to the city and express our most sincere sympathies and condolences to his family, friends, and colleagues. We're grateful for his dedicated service, and we're sorry that he's no longer around.
At this time, we can recognize the clerk for Renee Ward.
Okay, so this is the last time. I'll remind you that you have a responsibility to avoid conflicts of interest, and at this time, I ask there any potential conflicts concerning any agenda.
Before council, are minutes from the December 3rd, 2018 work session and the December 4th, 2018 city council meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
No move.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, minutes have been approved. There's one add-on item to our consent agenda. It's item H, to reject bids for the Burlington Alamance Airport Outfall. Do I hear a motion to adopt this add-on item?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion's passed. Before council, the agenda with the add-on item, do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
No move.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, agenda has been adopted. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A, to approve waiving bulk collection fees for the period of March 4th, 2019 through April 27th, 2019. Item B, to approve an agreement between the City of Burlington and Hallie Williams Carmen &amp; King, Inc. for inspection and plan review services on an as-needed basis contention upon proof of adequate insurance documentation. Item C, to approve budget amendment 2019-18 to allow Burlington Fire Department to use donations received from department supplies in the Fire Prevention Bureau. Item D, to approve budget amendment 2019-19 to allow Burlington Animal Services to receive donations to the Animal Services Staff Training Account. Item E, to approve budget amendment 2019-26 to allow Animal Services to receive donations for the use of medical care of animals. Item F, to approve budget amendment 2019-27 to allow Burlington Police Department to use funds received from Alamance County to apply them to the Burlington Communications 911 expenditures. Item G, to reclassify and restructure a public works administrative specialist position Level 17 to an animal services grants and development coordinator position Level 20, effective upon council approval, and to approve budget amendment 2019-29 to fund the request. Item H, to approve rejecting the bids for the Burlington Alamance Airport Outfall, which were received on November 6th, 2018, to allow city staff to further develop alternative routing and funding. Do I hear a motion to approve the foregoing consent agenda?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agendas presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, consent agenda items have been approved. We have a number of public hearings this evening. We're going to work through them as best we can in a timely manner. Item one, a public hearing has been set for citizens to comment on an amendment to the scope of work for North Park Phase One C project in the 2018-2019 Annual Action Plan. This time, we recognize Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development, David Beal.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight's public hearing has been scheduled to receive comments considering a change in the scope of work for the city's 2018-2019 Annual Action Plan. Specifically, the original language for North Park Phase One C scope of work read, "Replace North Park Recreation Field Lighting." The proposed change in the language reads, "Replace North Park Ball Field Lighting. Place permanent fencing extending along base lines to the outfield. Install new dugouts, fabric roof shade cover, concrete pad, benches mounted to concrete. Install new irrigation systems for baseball field, pour concrete pads for bleachers. Repair and regrade baseball field, remove existing rock screenings, other baseball field upgrades as needed." Staff would like to point out that the original budgeted amount remains the same at $136,642. The reason that an amendment is requested is that the city's HUD representative believes that the proposed changes are close to a 10% change in the total scope of work for the North Park Phase One C project. This public hearing has been advertised in accordance with HUD requirements. An amended version of the action plan was available for citizen review in the Planning and Community Development Department from November 26th through December 31st, 2018, and no written public comments were received. Staff is here to try and answer any questions about the proposed change, and at the close of the public hearing, it would be appropriate for council to approve the proposed amendment to the 2018-2019 Annual Action Plan.
Any questions from council? This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak.
Thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Cee Low Fosse, I live at 124 Fosse Avenue, Burlington, North Carolina. The North Park project has been something dear to my heart ever since I was on the council, and I'd like to thank city manager Watkins, former city manager and councilman Harold Owens, the other city council members, for falling through on this project. It means a lot to that community to have a facility like that. The increase in ownership over there has doubled for its pool, the park, and facilities all around. And I'd like to thank Tony Laws, has been director for that area, on how far we've come with that park. The park was really going down a little bit, but thanks to Tony and management here, that the park has really come back to life, and it means a lot to the community to have that available to them. And I applaud the city council for, I have Phase One C now. Hopefully, we'll be finished by 2020. I would like to say that 2020 would be, everything would be completed. But again, guys, I take, and Mayor Pro Tem Height, I take my hat off to the council members for falling through on that because it's been so dear to my heart, and I have a lot of trust in these guys and lady to carry that on because the community really needs that. And I ask you to please approve that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak? Anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Make a motion that we close the public here.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion regarding this agenda item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt amendment of the North Park Phase One C project as stated in the 2018-19 Annual Action Plan.
Second.
Second. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion's passed. Thank you. Item two on our public hearings, a public hearing has been set to consider an application to rezone from R-15 Residential District to CR, Conditional Residential District, for the use of a 114-unit townhome development. The properties are located on the north side of Garden Road between Wit Avenue and Boom Station Drive. Reference to Alamance County, parcel identification numbers 112-523 and 107-226. This time, we recognize Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and council. This is a rezoning request to go from R-15 Residential to CR, Conditional Residential. The request is for 114 two-story townhomes on 18.4 acres. This proposal is dense at 6.2 units per acre. The nearby apartment complex of Wayfair at Garden Crossing is 25.34 units per acre for a comparison. I would like to state, just as a planner's opinion, density is not a bad thing. It allows for ease of city service provision and higher rate of return on taxes. Also, this area is near apartment complexes and large commercial offerings such as Alamance Crossing. Nationwide, more and more people are looking for this type of development, to have a smaller home on a smaller lot with less maintenance so that they can go out and have experiential happenings in their lives instead of mowing a yard. It's also convenient for everyone to get to the things that they need, restaurants or shopping, or the highway to get to visit other people or go to work. In this particular development, setbacks will be a minimum of 25 feet. Sidewalks will be provided. Streets are 31 feet wide. curb and gutter, public water and sewer, solid waste, and recycling services through the city. Stormwater will meet city requirements. Landscaping will be provided as required. Two parking spaces per unit, which is normally 1.5 spaces. Collinwood Drive will be extended and aroundabout put in for traffic calming. The road extension will allow for faster response time in the area by emergency services. A neighborhood meeting has already been held. 59 residents were notified, 16 attended. Comments were as follows. Developer is adding additional landscaping, including retention of as many existing large trees as possible. That was a major request. Leanne Drive, where the easement is, they will add landscaping to the side corner of that area. Several members of the public spoke in opposition at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. They didn't like townhomes in close proximity. They prefer single-family detached homes. They didn't like that they would have a neighborhood sign. They didn't like density. There were concerns that existing homes along Garden Road could be rezoned to businesses following this. Concerns about devaluation of existing homes due to the townhomes coming in, and traffic increase in the area and through traffic. increase in the area and through traffic. The comprehensive plan calls for residential and commercial in the area. The residential includes multifamily. Commercial and O&amp;I are already in the area. The staff has recommended approval. The commission also recommended approval of the request by a vote of 5 to 2, and Mr. Mark Ruck is here to speak to this request.
Excellent. Welcome.
Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. We appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Amy. I think she went over a lot of my bullet points, so I'll try to be a little brief then. We are wanting to rezone the 18.4 acres here. The owners, Ms. Patricia Hoakes is here and her husband, Richard, oh, excuse me, that's Carolyn, I'm sorry. Patricia has had a death in the family recently and is unable to attend. That property is commonly known around the area as the Robertson's property, and they still own a few parcels out here along the front, which is not being considered tonight. We are asking for the rezoning for this tract of land. If you'll go back in years' time, this is the development that she has laid out, that Ms. Nelson has laid out, shows Collinwood Drive being extended, which is one of the items that the staff had requested. Our initial plan did not have that because we felt of neighborhood concerns, but after we listened to their concerns relative especially to the fire department being over off of Church Street near Edgewood, and the response times improved, it was obvious that we needed to put that extension in. We did add a roundabout in near Garden Road to help with traffic calming feature in this area to help slow down some of the traffic. Again, a lot of these, we are also proposing a loop road, if you will, coming around here. And to the northeast corner, we have been negotiating with Duke Energy, and we have worked out an agreement with Duke Energy to be able to go across a portion of their property for the sanitary sewer line, and then we will also tie back into the existing line over off of Gwynne Street. It's not quite shown on the map, it's more to the northeast of it. There's a substation, Duke Energy has a substation in that area, and we're crossing the northern end of it. Again, if you go back in history quite a bit, this, all of this area out here was originally zoned to R-15. And there is some property to the north that is still R-15, which was originally known as the WE Collins subdivision back in the 50s and 70s is when that development took place. You also have the Deerfield subdivision, which is to the east, and you also have the Preston subdivision to the northeast. But all the other remaining area around that has been rezoned over the years. Currently to the south, we do have B-2, R-9, and R-15. Area east of Leeann Drive is O&amp;I, R-6, and MFA. And we also have up along Church Street, O&amp;I, R-15, and B-2. And then to the west, we have some R-6 and R-9. There's been some tracts that have been rezoned from that. We are showing a density of one unit per 7,031 square feet, as Ms. Nelson has also gave you some other features to that. And we do have the normal requirements that she has already laid out relative to the streets, water and sewer, and so on. We did go through quite a bit of several plan reviews with the city staff to try to get this project to where it is, went through a lot of issues with parking and trying to make this particular townhome development better than some of the others that we have in town. In particular, we have public roads, and we have public right-of-way, and we will have public water and sewer. And some of the other developments in town have private streets, and some of them have private water, or, excuse me, private sewer services. This development will all be public, and therefore publicly maintained. And there have been some complaints too with parking within some of the other townhome developments. We do have the 25-foot setback. The sidewalk will be inside the right-of-way line, therefore there's additional width, or depth, if you would, from the right-of-way line to the unit to where you can park the cars and have the trash receptacles out at the street to where they don't conflict. We went through an iteration of some drawings to show how we could get all the containers out at the street and not impact driveways, and I know that's a concern throughout the city and other developments. The other thing too is that we have 31-foot back-to-back curb and gutter streets. Most of the other townhomes are 25, so that gives us additional six foot of width for emergency vehicles to go through. So we would recommend that the council approve this request, and I'll be glad to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council at this point?
So, Mark, these are public streets built to...
City standards.
City standards, not private streets.
That's correct.
It's not. And utility lines publicly owned at public standards.
That's correct.
Any other questions for council before we begin the public hearing? You will have an opportunity after the public hearing to answer any further questions. This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? Yes. Anyone folks step to the microphone if you could state your name and address, just for the record. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Hi, I'm Kristana Schuman. I'm a new physician at Westside OB-GYN. I just moved here in October to work in the community. I own the home on 540 Wit, which is the first home on the corner right where the magnifying glass is. We first learned about this development shortly after we moved here. I really have two primary concerns I'll just reference. One is the height. There's been no specification about the height. It was talked about two to three stories at several meetings. At the last meeting, Dr., or Mr. Lazzo said that he was willing to agree to two stories, but he was not willing to agree to a maximum height. I would like it to be specified, a maximum height. All of the homes that this surrounds are one-story homes, and I think he should be kept to a number that is significantly less than 50 feet and around 35, a reasonable height. My other concern is about the parking. They've referenced two lots, two car sizes. Most people own two, if not more, cars. There's only one space allowed as a garage, which in a thousand-square-foot home, you can imagine most people are going to be using as storage. Maybe a car, but you're always going to be playing back and forth, who's taking the car out, who's parking, who's leaving. So most people are going to be parking either in the driveway or on the street. I think that this is going to be significantly different than all of the areas that are surrounding, and there hasn't really been allotment for that. My third concern is that the density of this proposal is significantly different. I live in a residential nine zoning. It had been 15, was rezoned to R-9 with the appropriate amount of density that's normally allowed, and I think the same should be made for this property. If it's going to be changed from R-15, they should have the same density as an R-9. There's not a lot of allowances on Garden Road for significantly more traffic. This could bring 400 people to the area, which is going to significantly intensify traffic on Garden Road, which is already a cut-through between Church, St. Mark's Church, which is very busy, and Huffman Mill Road. In addition, there's around 80 homes between Garden Road and on Collinwood Drive. They're going to be directly impacted by this amount of traffic. And while I understand a need for density, I myself, as a recent homeowner, struggled to find a house in Burlington. I looked for several months to buy a home. I moved here, I've been a homeowner before. I wanted to own a home, I wanted to make a life in Burlington. It took me several months to find a house, and now to have this be happening is quite a disappointment, as you can imagine. I thought I had a neighborhood that I was moving into. In reality, you know, I'm going to be facing townhomes, and my house will be surrounded on three sides by roads. So I think there needs to be some specifications that make this more reasonable. Mr. Lazzo was not a resident of Burlington, he's a developer. There's people, you know, 80-plus families that live in this area that are going to be directly impacted by changes, value of homes, traffic. And I think that, as the council, it's in your interest to act in the interest of the people in the community and not outside developers who are trying to put a dense structure for monetary gains of selling more homes. So that's my personal opinion, so, thank you. I'll try to be brief.
Thank you.
Schuman, S-C-H-U-M-A-N. Five forty Wit. Oh, I will say, I have never received a notification in the mail, even though I am listed on the tax purposes of all of these meetings I have attended, but out of my own interest in calling people, our city planner, my neighbor who informed me initially of the first community meeting. So, you know, for what that's worth, I don't, when I've attended two other meetings, I was told that there would be postings of the date of this meeting, and I only found out yesterday that this meeting was today. So, you know, for what that's worth.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Tom Burgess. I live at 326 Coach Light Trail, which is adjacent to the property on the north. I'm recently retired from Quest Diagnostics in Greensboro, and formerly retired from LabCorp here in Burlington. My question, which we did ask at the neighborhood meeting, but I'm not sure that we got a satisfactory answer, is that has any marketing research been done to determine that there actually is a need, or not necessarily a need, but a desire for 114 townhomes in this particular area, especially given the number of new apartments that have already been built and that are also going up in the near future?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this side of the room?
Thank you. You gonna put my picture in there and I'll miss news again? Raymond Stewart, 518 Wood Avenue. If you could, go back to the...
That was a different photograph there.
Yeah. You know, when we look at this and we ask ourselves a question, this density thing, I think that's the biggest concern, and I kind of, I'm kind of the duboy on the street. A lot of those people on Wood Avenue are elderly and retired. Something needs to get done. I worked with the city in reducing the speed limit years ago. The things that most of them are echoing, and I'm sorry, a lot of them couldn't come, a lot of them are elderly and retired, is this density thing. And ma'am, you referenced Gwynne Station or something, you were talking about that density area. Tell me again, I couldn't quite hear in the back.
Let's see. 25.34 units per acre.
Right. And can you go to that photograph? And then let's look at how many residential homes surround that high-density area?
You with this one?
Whichever one you were referencing, where they, you know, I fight that traffic every day, wherever you want to pinpoint it at. I guess it's all the apartments they've built down towards Walmart, right?
Yeah.
And how many residential homes are around that facility? None.
Across the street.
But does any of them backyard butt up to it, like what we're going to experience? You know, our point, I guess, our concern is, you know, obviously, it needs to be developed the owners to can maximize their investments over time, but it seems like when you look at it being bordered three sides, basically, or two-thirds residential, this will have an impact. And it wasn't long ago that I'm one of the Shamrock people. My dad had a house at Shamrock, and I wasn't here too many months ago, and I personally experienced what happens when these type of things take place. We sold his home, we took a loss. And I asked one of the questions at the previous meetings, what can we expect as homeowners for a property value decrease? Because, and I use this example, and I think the guy took the picture, when you park $5 next to $10, one can't reasonably assume that $10 is going to hold its value. And I think that's what we're concerned about. I personally experienced that at Shamrock, you know, when I sold my dad's house. The development took place, you can't stop progress, fully understand that. It's just, this high-density thing is a deep concern of ours, that it's going to add to it. And I have a question for you, sir. On the parking, can you elaborate a little bit about what this parking's going to be like? If two or three automobiles are owned in several of the units within a block, where are these people going to park?
Like most residential streets, they're 31-foot back-to-back. The city typically allows parking on both sides of the street. And in between the driveways, we went through and laid out a plan, and we came up with 108 additional parking spaces that you could provide along the street frontage, in addition to the one in the driveway and the one in the garage.
So can you go to that photograph of the planned community, please?
Not on the board here.
No, it's the one she's got.
I believe it's on, yeah, that one.
This is what I'm looking for right here.
Sorry about that. So if a person has two vehicles, one's in the garage, one's in the driveway, right?
That is correct.
And if the one in the carport wants to come out, why happens to the one in driveway?
Obviously, they would need to back one of them out.
So what's the tendency going to be in most people's cases?
I'm not sure I can answer that question.
What would you do?
I do like I do at my driveway now. Either I use the, move the car, or my wife moves the car.
Don't park on the street?
Only if I have more cars than what I typically have. When I have visitors, my visitors do park on the street.
Do I, am I on a three-minute clock like I was last time?
Yes.
How much time I got?
You're just about done.
All right. Well, let me tell you what my observations have been on these neighborhoods, because I worked, a dear friend, Freeman Electric, who wires thousands of these throughout the P. Martin. And we go to these neighborhoods, and I watch them over time, okay? They look great. For six months, here later, eh, two years later, oh my. What happens is a lot of people park on the street, because they get tired of parking their car in and out of the driveway. Common sense, you know? Run out, move the car, pull in, pull out. So I think what's really going to happen, and truth be known, is people are going to be parking on the street. I mean, you don't take too much to drive around this town and see that illustrated in many different neighborhoods where you have this type of setup, high density. Am I done?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
I do have a letter that my one neighbor gave me because she wasn't coming tonight.
Yeah, you can bring it up for the... Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak? Anyone on this side of the room?
Hello. My name is Janan Tonovich. I live on 306 Coach Light Trail. I've been living there since 1979. Now, the question I have is this. I moved there in '79. We finally got it repaved last year. How long will it take the city to fix all the roads in that whole neighborhood? Because we're going to have way a lot more traffic. As it is now, St. Mark's Church Road and the road leading to Elon can back up a mile, as it is right now, the way it's standing. Now, they're doing some work there, but not very much. So my question is, how quickly will the city react to the traffic problems and the road problems that are going to develop because of this? You know, will it be a year, or will it be another 30 years like there was for us from '79, you know, 40 years before they repaved the road? Well, you're going to have a lot of work that needs to be done there. And I just wanted that. And the other thing that worries me, and I know it doesn't worry very many people, is we do have a lot of deer in that area. They're all in that area, and they do come out of my yard, and they come out in our neighborhoods, and soon somebody's going to have a wreck with a deer, no question in my mind, because those deer will be gone from there unless the city does something about it. The city really needs to do something about the population. And we also have wild, other wild animals. We do have some coyotes, and we have some feral dogs that are out there, so, you know, all that is going to be brought out into the neighborhood, and with children playing outside, you know, we don't want to have... The city really needs to do something about the population. And we also have wild... Other wild animals. We do have some coyotes, and we have some feral dogs that are out there. So, you know, all that is going to be brought out into the neighborhood, and with children playing outside, you know, we don't want to have... We don't want to have dogs that, I mean, you know... Or foxes, like the one that bit me, and happened to be, you know, I had to get all the shots because it had rabies. And we have those in the neighborhood. So, you know, we've got to be very careful about what happens there. But the roads, really, you all need to decide, when are you going to address that traffic problem that's going on St. Mark's and going to Elon and some of the other roads?
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
I move.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. I believe we had a number of questions brought up. Any questions from council?
To the gentleman's last question, Mr. Kirkland.
Regarding pavement score and...
Well, I mean, pavement score is just traffic, period.
Traffic, yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, the city's involved with DOT now on a fairly substantial, comprehensive look at the traffic issue as we go out Church Street to the west and cut back towards 8540 corridor, where there's, I'm saying, Mark's Church Road, and then, of course, University Drive, concept all in there. Some work is being done now, widening, if I'm not mistaken...
That's correct.
On St. Mark's Church Road. And can you give us an idea of just kind of where we stand out there in terms of that of the traffic flow from now and going forward?
Yeah, well, there's a number of funded projects that DOT has, and we've... This has gone through their normal scoring process and funding process. St. Mark's Church Road and US 70 has an intersection improvement project that is right now under construction. It's going to be adding dual lefts northbound, and is also going to add some right-turn lanes on different approaches to add capacity, to help, you know, reduce congestion of the intersection. In addition, there's a funded project at University Drive and US 70 that will actually widen Church Street from Westbrook West all the way to University Drive. It would also add capacity at University Drive and 70 intersection. So, those will be significant improvements in that area.
Can you just point out on the map, Westbrook to University Drive, what area that's going to be?
So, this is Westbrook Drive, Westbrook Avenue right here. And it goes west, just off of the map here, University Drive comes in, there's the intersection there. And then this is St. Mark's and 70, where there's an intersection project underway. There are a number of other projects in this area that have been submitted, you know, to the state process that just haven't been funded yet. You know, widening project along this entire stretch of St. Mark's, things of that nature. So, I know there's another project at Boone Station and Garden that staff's looking at internally. So, there are a number of efforts in this area to try to react to the traffic issues. I will say, you know, in terms of the traffic on Collinwood, I think one of the concerns the gentleman had was, you know, how would the city respond? So, we have a traffic calming policy that, you know, gives tools to the traffic commission and council and staff to try to react to if we have traffic calming issues on that street. In fact, the roundabout was an initiative that staff pushed to try to help address what felt like, certainly, you're going to get some cut-through traffic, but that roundabout helps to mitigate some of those cut-through traffic issues.
So, but based on this, if... Am I trying to stereotype who's going to live in these units? These individuals, many of them may work east and west or wherever. If they're actually going to access 8540, their direct route then would be to come down and then go to Huffington Road and get that intersection there. Is that correct?
Yeah, they've got a couple options. They could do that, yes, sir. They could go to St. Mark's University. They could come through, you know, Boone Station to University, sir. Different options.
There's also a question regarding maximum height of the development. Do you have any information regarding that or ordinance restrictions?
That was discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and the developer can speak for himself, obviously, but he was concerned about having enough room for an attic space or things of that nature, some kind of decorative amenities on the buildings.
What are the restrictions by code?
Fifty-two feet? Fifty feet? Fifty feet?
Fifty feet is the standard.
Code does not list stories, it just gives a maximum height.
But he has limited himself to two stories.
But that doesn't have a foot height attachment to it? Okay. Did you have a clarification of your question?
I just... I think the two stories, you know, does that count the garage as a story, and then only one story of living space? Or is it two stories of living space? And this R-15 is not zoned to 50 feet of height? It's CR, that's 50 feet.
I would ask the developer about the garages.
Would you want to comment on that?
Hi, my name is David Lazzo with 2100 Cook Ridge Court in Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm the developer of the property, hope to be. And when it comes to the architecture, most of the two-story townhomes, you have a garage, but you also have... You can even see it on our site plan, there's a garage area, and then there's an entrance. So, the entrance is, you know, part of that is a first floor, and then the second floor is above that, and then we have attic space. So, it's your... I think you could probably go anywhere and see the same style of townhome and see what a two-story typically looks like, and that's what we're looking for. The reason I wouldn't want to limit myself to a height, other than what's allowed by the UDO for the zoning designation, is that I don't know which builder will build these townhomes and what their unit might look like. And it would be a shame for me to specify a height, and a roof pitch might be different from one builder to another on the style or whatever, and I find myself limited because I picked the wrong height. But we are willing to go two stories, and that's pretty much the standard, I think, that you'll see. And I can't imagine we'll go 50 feet for any reason, but, you know, if I said 35 is what was suggested, I could be limiting myself to maybe, you know, one or no builders, or I'm not sure who would... What product height is going to be picked.
Other questions from council?
Nolan, Mike, talking about traffic. I spend a lot of time over there. I actually live reasonably close on the other side of Church Street. And what I've noticed over time is those individuals that are traveling to Alamance Crossing will go down Collinwood and then cut through over to West Ridge. That's pretty much a thoroughfare, truth be known, through there, which there's a lot of cars parked on the side of the road there on a routine basis anyway. I know that from experience. So, the belief now is going to be that those people will just take Collinwood all the way through. Same behavior takes place. Are we reasonably comfortable that the roundabout's going to be able to handle that?
Well, I think that's why we asked for the roundabout and tried to negotiate that with the developer. I used to live on Cobblestone, right in this area, so I know exactly what you're talking about. Used to walk the kids, you know, even down to West Ridge. So, certainly, yeah, you've got some cut-through traffic. And some of that's going to get diverted here. I don't think you're going to avoid that. I think that the roundabout was the staff's best attempt to try to mitigate that. But we definitely wanted the connection. The street connectivity is important for emergency services, traffic services, and things of that nature. So, and that was the intent, you know, of that connection when it was originally built.
For the most part, the loading of the neighborhood's going to be on new streets, not any existing streets. I mean, Collinwood, the extension on Collinwood there, how many units is that?
And that little stub north?
Yeah. Is it like eight or something?
Where are you talking about?
In one section.
It's going to be on Collinwood, down in the burrow.
Overall, there's 16, is that right?
You're talking about these?
Yeah. Is it 16 overall?
It's like two, four, six, eight, 10, 12. Yeah, 16.
Yeah, 16 overall, okay. There's 114 total, right?
Other questions from council?
I would like to point out one thing. We are proposing to put in a right-turn lane for westbound traffic and a left-turn lane for eastbound traffic at that intersection of Collinwood and Garden Road.
Thank you for mentioning that. I know one question that was brought up... Just a moment. One question that was brought up and comes up fairly regularly is regarding market demand for units. And obviously, North Carolina being one of the fastest-growing states in the country, there is market demand. But do you want to speak to that at all?
Yeah, as the first rule for any development is there needs to be a market, you know, for the product that you're planning on putting there. And certainly, my research has indicated that there is, the townhomes that are available and being built currently in Burlington's submarket are selling and selling rapidly. So, you know, there's an obvious need all over the country, but particularly here and elsewhere in the triad and the triangle for more affordable housing. This provides that. As single-family housing is going through the roof price-wise, it's almost impossible to find a home under $250,000. Townhomes provide that for young, single people, young couples, retired folks, single moms are big buyers of townhomes. So, there's a definite market for that. And, you know, I wish I could have honestly had more and more units out here, but we're trying to be reasonable with the number that we've got in there and keep it enough open space to make it an attractive place to live.
Any further questions from council, or do I hear a motion?
Just, I've got one more question. Peter Bishop, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you gave a presentation on economic development. You talked about our housing market. Can you give us a brief synopsis of what it is? I think it's important that everybody hear what we heard at the work session about the rating that we've got in our area.
Certainly. I think I'm busy tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. What I reported last night was, we have seen increasingly positive trends in our residential permits. We have seen more multifamily units than we have traditional subdivisions in single-family homes. Those permits have gone up every year since 2014, and we had an 8% increase in our residential building permits from last year to this year. Homeownership rates have changed in the last eight years in Burlington. In the 2010 census, it was about 67%, and now it's about 54%. So, there has been a decline in homeownership. That's probably a trend that you'll see nationwide as homeownership with newer generations, millennials, and the other generations have not seen the value of home buying as strongly as folks in my generation and some of yours. So, that trend has been nationwide. We've seen it here. But we certainly are seeing increase in residential interest in this market, and a lot of folks, you know, getting the jobs here and then also to our major metros on either side.
One of the hottest real estate markets in the triad.
That's correct. The other statistics that I showed was a market hotness report that was provided at the end of last year by Realtor.com, and it showed that the Burlington metro area market was hotter than the Los Angeles market, than the Minneapolis market in the last quarter of last year. So, we have certainly seen an increase in transactions and activity here.
Thank you. Any other questions from council, or do I hear a motion?
Mark, do you have a visual... Visuals of what's being proposed to be built there?
As far as the units themselves?
Yes.
If I may, I'd like to address that as well. These are not examples of necessarily what will be built. These are examples of what two-story townhomes look like, what has been built. What we're trying to show here is that the units will be... They'll be offset front and back, so there's not going to be one big flat front surface. Roofs... Roof lines will be distinctly separate, so it looks like individual units for each one. And there'll be a mix of vertical, horizontal siding and accents such as stone that you would typically see, particularly nowadays, as stone isn't so popular. So, we're just trying to illustrate. I was asked to see, you know, if there's anything that looks, you know, kind of like what could be done here, and that's, you know, this is... I wouldn't want you to take this and say, "That's what we're building." But every builder's got a different style. It was just a matter of trying to demonstrate the mix of materials and how the buildings will be set back, back and forth, and up and down on the roofs.
The depth of the driveway, Mark, from the outside door of the garage to the street?
25 feet.
25 feet, definitely.
Well, to the street, let's say you've got 31, so that'd be nine and a half, so you'd have 25, be 34 and a half feet. And you got the sidewalk, that would be two foot inside the right-of-way line, so you'd have 27 feet from the garage back out to the sidewalk.
Any further questions? Do I hear a motion from council? Go for it.
Mark? Let's say that we're not attempting to determine who is going to live in these units, but let's say there's a... We hear often about young mothers, single mothers, and these type... This type housing, and it makes a lot of sense. Help me now. Sidewalk, obviously, if there's a young kid there, kid with a bicycle, comes out of the garage, comes down the driveway, car parked in the garage. A child gets... Basically, will get to the sidewalk first, is that correct? So, he's not on the street.
That is correct.
Obviously, they come down on the street, there's cars parked on the street. They have the visibility issue in terms of cars going through traffic with cars on the street itself.
That is correct.
And looking back through my notes, there's a couple of comments that were made, I think Ms. Nelson made them, about the retention of trees and some extra landscaping that was put in there. That's kind of a broad statement. What's... What are we going to do for tree retention? I mean, is there a plan? Do you guys have a plan for that?
At this time, we have not developed a plan because we've not done any survey work, so it's hard to identify any potential trees. But that is why we had one of the notes that indicated that we would... Let me try to read the note so I get it correctly. One is back over here... If I can... This area back over here is the first note, if you want to show Amy where that location And we had said that we would provide additional plantings as practically possible adjacent to the northern property line between the northwest property corner and Collinwood Drive adjacent to Unit 16. That's back... Back right in that area there, between... That's 16 is that corner lot going back in there. The reason why I worded it that way is I'm an engineer, and I'm not a landscape architect, and I can't tell you one tree from another tree, or shrub, or anything else. But when we get into the TRC approval phase, we will be working with the staff on the approval of the landscape plan. And so, we will try to put in as many trees as practically and whatever the landscaper or architect would recommend is what we would put in. Is that a fair assessment, David?
It's a fair assessment. In addition to the public...
Right.
Is this?
Right. And then also, note number two that we added, which is back over here, west of the roundabout and between Unit 1 and coming back to Garden Road, there are some larger trees in that area. And all this area over here, we have left to be open space. We're not exactly sure how that open space will be used, but we would like to try to retain as many of those larger trees... retain as many of those larger trees in that area as practically possible. We will have to obviously grade for the roundabout, the sidewalk and things of that nature. So, if you've got a tree that's within five foot of a sidewalk, that tree could possibly be damaged. And then, of course, the third area that we talked about is back over here to the east side of the project, on the east side of the Duke Energy Easement. You need to pan up a little bit higher, the other way. You see the Duke Energy? There you go. We have also added the 25-foot, it was just left off inadvertently. You see how you've got the 25-foot line that is coming down parallel to the property line? It's now, we've extended over like this and then back up parallel. So, we would make that also a type C planting yard.
So, back over towards Units 1 through 16 on Collin Wood, Eric Witt, what is the plans to buffer between those existing homes and what we're proposing?
That is the type C planting yard, which is, consists of 20-foot width, we've got it 25, but one canopy tree per 100 linear feet, two under-story trees per 100 linear feet, and 15 shrubs per 100 linear feet. That is per the ordinance.
Anything extra than what the ordinance requires?
Only along the north, the northern property line where, I believe, Mr. Mize had talked to the developer at one of the, at the residential meeting. Is that correct? Yep.
Any further questions? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, it seemed to be a lot of thinking going on about this matter, and I'm just wondering if it'd be advisable to continue this until the next meeting. We have one member absent, as you know, and maybe have input from all five council members. And I'm just wondering, I throw the question out, would this, would the current members or this council as constituted consider continuing this matter until, I guess, the first meeting in February? Is that something that would be, that should be considered?
I don't have a problem with that. I'm fine with that. If that's the continuation to the February 5th meeting?
If indeed, there's not a problem with it, I would certainly move that we continue to the February 5th meeting.
Does that represent any major hurdle for you all?
No, sir, no hurdle.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. It's a move.
That's second.
Any questions regarding the motion to continue? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion to continue to February 5th has been approved. This time, we thank everyone for their comments and we thank you all for being here. We're going to move on to the next agenda item. And just to note, the public hearing was closed on this item, so this is just to continue until council discusses. Folks, if you do want to have a conversation with your husband, you step out of the chamber when you have a number of items left on the agenda. Thomas. Sir, I see your hand in the back. The public hearing is closed. If you do have further questions, you can direct them to staff following the meeting. Since this is continued, there will be further opportunity for staff to address any council questions. Item 3 on our agenda, a public hearing is set to consider an application to rezone from MFA multifamily district to B2 general business district, being a portion of Alamance County. Tax identification numbers 133419 and 133425. The properties are located at 409 Stoke Street and being a portion of Alamance County, tax identification numbers 133419 and 133425. This time, we recognize Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you. This is a rezoning request to go from MFA multifamily to B2 general business. The two lots in question abut a property to the north. All three lots have the same owner. The owner wishes to add a lean-to onto the rear of the commercial building that is on this property. The problem with it is that it does not meet setback requirements. The request is to rezone a small 15-foot strip, as you can see delineated here, along the rear of the two multifamily lots to accommodate the lean-to, allowing it to meet setback requirements. There are no foreseeable problems with continued use of these two lots for residential purposes. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, no one from the public spoke in opposition. Staff recommends the request, and the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning request, and Ms. Laura Toy is here to speak to this.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Laura Toy. I own the properties that are involved in this rezoning request. As Amy mentioned, the purpose of our rezoning request is to allow us to meet a 15-foot setback requirement from the property line for a proposed commercial to residential structural addition that we want to add. It's basically a 20-foot by 60-foot lean-to on the backside of the 410 Cleveland Avenue property. And that property, I guess, is zone B2 basically for general business. The requested zoning, though, pertains to the two residential properties that I also own at the back of the Cleveland Avenue property. Both of these lots are accessed from the Stoke Street side, and one is a vacant lot and one has a vacant house on it. We are requesting that 15-foot portion at the back be rezoned from MFA multifamily residential to B2 business to satisfy that setback requirement. It should have negative impact to the area, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions from council or Mrs. Toy?
I would like to remind council that this is a straight rezoning, so you do need to consider the information in your agenda packets.
Any questions from council before we begin the public hearing? Thank you. You have an opportunity afterwards to answer any questions from council. This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak regarding the site. Anyone on this side? Welcome.
Good evening.
You can state your name and address for the record.
My name is Gloria Brasher. I own the land and property on 413 Kate's Avenue. The, I have a church, the Morning Star Baptist Church is currently buying that property from me, and I don't know if that has anything to do with the rezoning or not.
It's not involved in the rezoning?
Okay.
No.
I did know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Don't move. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Any questions from council regarding this item?
Do I hear a motion regarding this agenda item? I make a motion if we approve the request to rezone from MFA multifamily district to B2 general business district to the properties at 409 Stoke Street, being a portion of Alamance County, tax parcel numbers 133419 and 133425. This motion is based upon consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan and that the future land use may have been Section 4 marked land use of the comprehensive plan. Calls for this area to have traditional residential and mixed-use properties contiguous to existing B2 zoning now. This action is reasonable and in public interest in that there would be no impact to the adjacent MFA lots for residential use if the subject property is resumed as requested. This amendment is compatible with the existing land uses in the area.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate you all being here. Thank you, Mrs. Toy. Item 4 on our agenda, a public hearing is set to consider adopting an ordinance amending Burlington City Code, Chapter 22, Article 2, Smoking and Pollution Control. This time, we recognize Casey Lynch, a Nealon Fellows Program member working with Impact Ellen. Enter giant jar of cigarettes. Makes a better impression.
Some folks have memories of deja vu. It's a little different.
Hi, my name is Casey Lynch. My address is 477 Retreat Lane, Burlington, North Carolina, 27215. So, the Burlington Tobacco Park Free Parks Initiative emerged as an issue from the community, and it was brought forward to the Alamance County Wellness Collaborative. So, the Wellness Collaborative formed a subcommittee surrounding this issue, and then we brought this issue forward to the Recreation and Parks Commission, who reviewed it favorably. We are here today bringing this issue forward to educate the community. As a subcommittee of the Alamance County Wellness Collaborative, my partners and I, a lot of them are here behind you, we went to about nine of the different parks all around Alamance County, making sure we covered all different areas, and we picked up cigarette butts, as you can see. I think it's important to point out that a lot of these cigarette butts were found around the children's areas and around the baseball fields and the different ball fields, especially like under the bleachers, which is very difficult to get under, I might say. So, we found a lot of these, and we just wanted to bring these forward for you as just as a visual of what we're finding in our parks. So, currently, I'm serving as an Alamance County, or as an Nealon Alamance Fellow in this community. I live here and I love it here, especially the parks. I was stunned at how many cigarette butts we found, as I mentioned, near the children's areas, the baseball fields. I live right across from Joe Davidson Park and walk my dog there regularly. I cannot tell you how many times I've pulled cigarette butts out of my dog's mouth. I go to the park to exercise and enjoy all of the park system has to offer. We also love the dog park, but sometimes I don't feel safe taking my dog there just considering how small he is and how small the cigarette butts are that he puts into his mouth. I don't want to worry about him eating harmful cigarette butts. Further, we've all noticed the increase of e-cigarette use, some of which contain nicotine, some of which do not. While some of the youth believe this is a safe alternative, it is important to be aware that there are 11 to 12 different harmful chemicals that can be found in the vapor from e-cigarettes. So, the vapor is emitted no matter if there's nicotine in it or if it's just a flavored one, which is important to note, and I feel like that's kind of overlooked a lot of the time. So, of all the vapors emitted, nicotine has the second highest emission rate, which, as we all know, is a drug and is addictive. So, further, the U.S. Surgeon General has issued an advisory warning concerning all e-cigarettes, and it has released a statement that although e-cigarettes are slightly less harmful than cigarettes, they still pose a substantial health risk.
Hi, my name is Sally Gordon. I live at 244 Canary Place, Burlington, North Carolina. I come before you today as a recent graduate of Elon University and currently participating in a post-undergraduate fellowship here in Alamance County. I've had the privilege of working with various public health agencies throughout the area and learning how interwoven policy is in each of these organizations. I've also been working closely with the Wellness Collaborative on various health initiatives, including this tobacco-free Burlington City parks. I'm here today in support of this initiative. I've seen firsthand litter caused by cigarettes and tobacco products in our parks. I'm an avid runner and frequent Josie Davidson Park to run the trail loop. Cigarette butts and other tobacco products can be seen all around the trail, close to the sporting fields and even near the children's play areas. Cigarette butts are the most common form of litter here in the United States and can really only be collected by hand, quite a time-consuming process. These cigarette butts are full of chemicals that can contaminate soil and make their way into surrounding waterways, therefore impairing our water quality. Cigarettes also can take anywhere from 18 months to even 10 years to biodegrade. It is disheartening as a resident and public health professional to see the beautification of our parks be disrupted by copious amounts of litter. I'm in full support of this tobacco-free parks initiative, and I hope you are too. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, my name is Sean Perkins. My address is 1919 Basin Creek Road, Burlington. I'm here representing Cone Health Cancer Center in Alamance Regional. I'm a thoracic nurse navigator, which is a fancy way of saying I'm a resource to lung cancer patients. I walk with them hand-in-hand through suspicious findings, diagnosis and on through treatment, and a lot of times beyond that. I've also coordinated our lung cancer screening program. You may have seen some of the billboards about that, and I'm one of the smoking cessation instructors. I'm also a former smoker and a father of four. I'm a lifelong Alamance County resident, and I've had a lot of children, do a lot of things with the parks and recreations, as well as myself and my wife. So, I wanted to speak with you about lung cancer in particular. About 10 years ago, cancer surpassed heart disease in North Carolina as the most frequent cause of death. That's still true today. And in fact, Alamance County's cause of death being, cancer being the number one cause of death, is higher than the state averages. When you look at cancer causes of death and you look at specific types of cancer, lung cancer is by and far the number one. It's actually double the rates of breast or prostate cancer. You may hear statistics that it's more, every year more people die from lung cancer than breast, colon and prostate all put together. So, it's a serious disease, and you'll hear many people say, well, not everybody that smokes gets lung cancer, or not everybody that gets lung cancer smokes. Both those statements are true. In fact, if you just look at the people that get lung cancer not related to smoking, it's still a very significant number. However, we do know that 80 to 90% of people that get lung cancer is directly related to smoking. And not to mention all the other negative health effects that it has, COPD. A lot of people don't realize kidney cancers are also contributed majorly to smoking, a lot of other health issues. So, through my work, I see a lot of people who smoke or have smoked in the past, and we know that it's very hard to quit smoking. Many of you in this room, myself included, know that from personal experience. We also know that most people start smoking as a teenager. It's a time where you feel very invincible as a teenager. You're trying to fit in, you're very susceptible to peer pressure. These are all really important because nobody as a teenager picked up a cigarette thinking, well, 30 years later, I'm still going to be smoking and it's going to start harming my health, or 20 years later, whatever it is. So, the keys to lowering our lung cancer deaths are a couple of things. First of all, I'm very passionate about screening for lung cancer. It's similar to a mammogram or colonoscopies to catch cancers early when you can be more actionable. More importantly, though, we really have to prevent our kids from ever starting to smoke. You know, that's really the key. Minimizing their exposure to other people that are smoking, it just makes sense because you're cutting out secondhand smoke exposure, and you're also cutting out the influence of seeing adults, often people that they look up to, athletes, other people that are smoking. For people that are trying to quit, being in environments where people are not smoking increases their chances of being successful. You know, if somebody is exposed to smoking while they're trying to stop, it's not going to work very often. So, not allowing smoking in any of our parks and recreation facilities and events are very important, and it will save lives. It's important that, as a community, we do our best to provide a healthy environment for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Good evening. I'm Marcia Green, 6808 Winters Drive, Woodset. I am here as a member of the Wellness Collaborative and also I'm the Program Director with Impact Alamance. The Wellness Collaborative, most of you are familiar with. We work on creating healthier spaces in Alamance County through environment changes such as sidewalks and new playgrounds, but we also look for policies that we can change that will promote public health. We came back, we came to you back in February- We came back, we came to you back in February 2018, Anne Milecki from Healthy Alamance and myself, as the Wellness Collaborative representatives, and we talked about health in our policies at that time. And you guys did pass that resolution, and I will keep this short and sweet, this is the time to use that as guidance in this decision. And I'll also say, as Impact Alamance, we've enjoyed a strong relationship with the city of Burlington. Our very first investment in Alamance County was the splash pad, $500,000. The city always does a great job in providing matching funds, providing the staff to operate, and that's why we work so well with you guys. Willow Brook Park, we're excited about that. We're excited about the new playground at North Park. And when we think about these investments, you know, we think about families coming together, communities coming together, fitness, beauty, and also, we want to provide fresh air, and we will make sure that's guaranteed. That's part of the healthy package. So thank you for your time.
Y'all really do have the whole team here.
Sorry. I'm going to keep it really short and sweet. Hi, I'm Glenda Lenins. I live at 3109 Winfield Ridge Drive, Burlington, North Carolina. I'm here to speak in support of the Tobacco-Free Parks Ordinance. My husband and I frequently hike the trails and kayak at Lake McIntosh, and we walk the track at Springwood Park, and we love how beautiful the parks are here, and that we hope that they will continue to be a beautiful and safe place to visit. Cigarette butts affect the beauty of the parks, as well as endangering the safety of our local wildlife and our water system. I appreciate so much the council trying to protect the residents and the visitors to all of our local parks by looking at adopting this ordinance, whether it be for an asthmatic child riding the carousel at City Park, a pregnant mom watching her child play tennis at the Tennis Center, a grandmother with COPD watching her granddaughter get married at Lake McIntosh, or even a smoker that smokes two less cigarettes due to this policy. All lives matter. Thank you so much for your time.
Hi, good evening. I'm Mary Gillette. I live at 1002 Montpelier Drive in Greensboro, North Carolina. I'm a resident of Guilford County. I'm a parent, and I'm a grandparent, and I utilize the Burlington Park systems, because they're about halfway between my daughter and her baby and myself. I'm also a health educator, and I'm the Regional Tobacco Prevention Manager for an eight-county area that includes Alamance County. Our parks represent some of the most public of our resources, and those that are most important to promote health and activity, and I have been so greatly privileged to be a part of the Wellness Council here and to find the really genuine upsurge of health and policy and push for tobacco-free policies that is coming very genuinely from your partners and your community. What you have in that health collaborative is not common in every community, and so I hope you realize what a treasure it is. It's encouraging to see a movement across North Carolina to make these resources fully accessible to everyone who prioritize the air we breathe and the cleanliness of your parks. In North Carolina, there are currently 28 counties and 101 municipalities that have fully 100% tobacco-free or smoke-free parks policies. Speaking as a professional, I assist cities and counties in my region to enforce and to implement these policies, and I remain available to provide technical assistance to Tony and his crew and to the Wellness Collaborative. Parks are about smoke-free air, fresh air and exercise, but they're also about modeling really healthy behaviors for our next generation. As a private citizen, my first visit to the park was a stretch break with my toddler as we made our way back from Raleigh, and we loved the greenway, and we loved walking the greenway, but unfortunately, we were several hundred paces behind a cigar smoker. So those who feel that smoke simply dissipates to nothing in the fresh air, I think there are folks with asthma and COPD that might beg to differ with that. There was no harm intended, but it certainly affected our walking pace that day. Parking lots where moms unload their strollers, bus stops and sidewalks where the families make their way to them from the park, or ball fields where children watch their moms and dads play softball are just as important as playgrounds, splash parks, and Little League games. I thank you for going the full course, and I hope you consider this gold standard policy to have the most possible protections in your parks, because your park systems are an absolute gem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on the team?
My name is Gavin Stevens. My address is 1109 Providence Court in Elon. I'm here today as a concerned parent, actually, a colleague of these folks, but also the mom of a three-year-old daughter, and she gets a City Park Family Membership every year for her birthday. So we love the carousel when it's open, and the train, and the rides, and the playground. My husband also plays on the city softball league, so we love to go and cheer him on at the games there, too. I don't have to tell you about the dangers of secondhand smoke, you know that, and some of my colleagues have covered that, but I'm here to tell you that I don't know how much time you spend with toddlers, but it's not just Casey's dog that picks up cigarette butts and puts them in her mouth. I'm sorry to report that toddlers are very curious, and we've had more than one instance where I've turned around to see a cigarette butt in my daughter's hand headed for her mouth, which is a horrifying experience. So I just, I want to make sure that my daughter grows up in a community that really values her safety and her health and clean air, and I hope that you will consider tonight passing this ordinance, so that we can make sure that our next generation knows that this is something that our community really values, that we want to have clean air and clean space. And this was important enough to me tonight to miss bedtime and bath time, so I hope that you will give it your consideration and make our parks better for our youth. Thank you.
Greetings, Mayor, City Council members. I'm Katie Latta, and obviously, I'm a senior citizen. I am here on behalf of the Conodle Senior Center to support the request that the Senior Center be designated a Zone Smoke-Free Zone. Our Senior Center is one of the best, if not the best, in Richmond Center in North Carolina, and it's here for all of us. The staff at the center is caring and supportive of us, our senior citizens. Many of our older population are sensitive to allergens, smoke being a key one, leading to breathing problems. Often seniors come to the Senior Center with portable oxygen containers. As you look around our community, you will find many campuses attended by seniors have already been designated as smoke-free zones. Our hospital, senior living communities like Village of Brookwood, just to mention a few. The Conodle Center is also considered a part of the City Park System. I have participated with the Senior Center's fleet walkers at our City Park, and I know the mental and physical benefits of walking outside in the fresh air. All it would take is a flick of a cigarette, not quite extinguished, into dry leaves or pine straw to damage our valuable park resources. Isn't it time these areas are designated as smoke-free zones, Mayor, Council members?
Welcome.
My name is David Durham. I'm a lifelong resident of Alamance County. My address is 1013 Brookview Drive in Elon. I come to you, I am a pastor at the First Baptist Church of Elon, the Associate Pastor, but this evening, I come to you as a parent and as a coach. I've had the great privilege of coaching through the Burlington Recreation Parks Department, soccer, baseball, basketball, tennis now, for the past eight years as my children, my two sons have grown up. And this is a subject that is near and dear to my heart, having family members who have died because of what's sitting in front of you today. It is a great opportunity to provide a model to our young people what healthy living is all about, and I think that's what Burlington seeks to become, and that's what the park system seeks to provide. But watching and teaching children, not just on the field, seeing what they're learning off the field is a major factor. You heard the comments made about smoking in the stands right beside the baseball fields. I've seen it. You've heard the stories about children being exasperated with asthma because of vaping. I've seen it. You've also seen children introduced to spit tobacco through sporting events, baseball, one of those big things. I've seen it. It is a need in our community to make a statement, and this is a great way to make a statement for the city of Burlington. Even Major League Baseball 2016, they have banned any new players coming in for using spit tobacco in Major League Baseball parks. Over half those Major League Baseball parks have eliminated all tobacco products whatsoever. If the top is doing it, the local fields should be doing it as well. We need to make a statement for our children, understanding their health is important. Thank you.
Thank you. We kind of flowed right into the public hearing, so I do want to make sure that everyone on both sides of the room gets a chance to speak, if anyone on this side of the room.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Chris Honeycaddell of 1511 Wales Court. I'm also the Chairman of the Burlington Recreation Commission. In our regular meeting on November 8th, the Commission heard arguments for the proposed city ordinance to adopt a tobacco-free policy. At the end of the presentation and after discussion, the Commission voted unanimously to recommend passage of this ordinance. I've been a resident of Burlington since I was five years old, and I love this town. I'm a parent and also a coach, and love what the Recreation Department can provide for my family. I've also been an employee of the Recreation Department, believe we have one of the finest in the state of North Carolina. I've also lifted up bleachers and scooped up plenty of that in a previous life. I'm also a former tobacco user, thankfully, long ago. I applaud the city for considering this ordinance, and I was glad to take a vote on something that will bring us to the standard of our neighboring municipalities. We need to exhibit to our children that a healthy lifestyle is a major factor to improved quality of life, and this is a step in the right direction. Our park system is here for us to use to improve ourselves and enjoy what the city has to offer, and smoke should not be the first thing we encounter when we finish a workout, a run, or a picnic in the park. While I was a tobacco user, I do not want my son partaking, and I'm sure there are a majority out there that are like-minded. I do not judge others for their habits, but the Recreation and Park Department's mission is to encourage healthy living, and a tobacco-free life will be a longer life, so this ordinance seems long overdue. Please continue to support our Recreation and Parks Department, facilities, and outstanding staffers who work hard on our behalf. I encourage you to pass this ordinance amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Honeycaddell. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak? Yeah?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Paul Tootes, members of the City Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address you tonight. I'm Jan Boilston, and I live at 5005 Windsor Court in Elon, and I'm also a pediatrician at Burlington Pediatrics. And so I take the liberty of speaking for my fellow physicians tonight when I say that we wholeheartedly would encourage you to pass this ordinance. And there are a couple of things that I think are really important. You know, it just makes sense that simply children require healthy air for healthy play. Many of my fellow speakers have done a tremendous job in articulating the merits of why we want to do this, but I have a couple of other different perspectives that I'd like to share with you. It's, you know, clearly well-established that smoking has numerous risks for health, including cancer, but in terms of pregnant women and children, there are some unique things that I don't think we take into account. For pregnant mothers, tobacco use can increase the risk of pregnancy complications, such as preterm birth and birth defects. Secondhand smoking exposure in children is associated with conditions ranging from asthma to ear infections to sudden infant death syndrome. And these are very sobering facts, but they're not just statistics. You know, for us, for our work family, you know, we are grieving the recent loss of an infant from SIDS in our community. Every day, you know, we struggle to help children who come in just, who are struggling or truly are struggling to breathe due to their asthma condition. And so these are things that, at the end of the day, you know, we think about, what are some ways that we can help them or do our job better, and what are ways that we, as a community, can really support them and maybe really decrease the number of children who really suffer from these conditions? And we're not asking to change everything, but I think truly in the ways that we can, I would encourage our community and you, the City Council, to please step up to do so. There are some other things that I think are really important and unique to this proposition, and it's because it includes the electronic cigarettes. And it's vital that, to be effective, that the amendment include the provisions for electronic cigarettes and smokeless tobacco. It is true that aerosol from e-cigarettes contains numerous chemicals, including numerous carcinogens that really haven't been studied completely yet, but according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, e-cigarette use among teens is associated with a higher likelihood of using regular tobacco and is also associated with lower rates of smoking cessation. In 2014, more young adults reported using e-cigarettes than any other tobacco product. And so the relevance is very high, even though the absolute number of youth who are smoking tobacco products may have decreased. Electronic cigarettes and smokeless tobacco are on the rise. The other perspective that I'd like to bring to this is, the proposed Tobacco-Free Parks Ordinance also supports the underlying strategic goals of our local municipalities and community organizations in our collective ongoing work to build the foundation for a healthier and more active community. And thank you, Marcy, for alluding to this point. There is strong evidence that community engagement is critical in influencing population-based health outcomes by promoting social norms that model healthy, positive behaviors. And for more information, I would encourage the Council members, as well as our audience, to please go, you know, look up the CDC's Best Practices for Comprehensive Tobacco Control Programs. Frankly, actions speak louder than words, and children and adolescents are highly impressionable, and they take their cues from their surroundings, what they observe, the people they admire, and through effective local policy, we can really model our standards for a healthy community. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room? Richard?
I'm Richard Parker, 417 South Broad Street. I'm on plan and zone, and I applaud the Commission, Recreation Commission, for taking these steps to present this to you. My question is, I hope that, after all this testimony you've heard, that you'll give it a thumbs up. I feel sure you will, but I was just concerned about the enforcement of this ordinance and how this will be enforced. I know we put signs up that say "Smoke-Free Zone," but what happens when we find a smoker sitting in the stands at the ballgame? What happens? How does this ordinance get enforced? That's my question.
Thank you for the question. We've had some discussion of that at one of our previous work sessions, and so I'll try to compile what our city staff has said. So if adopted, the ordinance does provide provisions within the City Code 485, I believe it's $50. So we have that as teeth if we need to. We do not anticipate having to go that far with a patron, nor do we want to. I mean, our interest as city staff is compliance, not punishment. I think that's, everybody would agree here, we want people to comply, not, we're not seeking to punish. So we have that available if we need. What we envision will happen, and I think what our peers tell us what happened to other communities, is this gives a tool to our Parks and Recreation, our Recreation and Parks staff, you know, to say, "Hey, are you aware there's an ordinance?" And so our staff would point to a sign somewhere in that facility or in that park. It also empowers other park users to do the same, right? Are you aware, there's no staff here today, you kind of assume that, are you aware that smoking is not allowed, and obviously, we'll have those signs posted throughout the park. So we hope to give those tools, and then obviously, if there's a repeat offender, problems continue, we have the ability to escalate if we need to.
Anyone else on this side of the room? Anyone from this side who did not yet could speak yet? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing? Make a motion to close the public hearing? Second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Any questions from Council regarding this ordinance?
A question to Mr. Huffman. Is that a call from this COVID chapter? Is it specifically related to park system? And what I'm getting to is, we have a facility... And what I'm getting to is, we have a facility, one of those used facilities in the Parks Department, Paramount Theater, where each night when you go there, it's announced if you smoke, you can walk outside on the sidewalk and smoke. If, and I know this gets into the weeds here for a minute, but same thing can be said for our public library or our library downtown. Same, same concept. This question's going to be, if we approve this request, as I think we will, this question is going to be asked.
How does it apply to this?
How does it apply to a particular situation like that?
First, let me, Councilman Mayor, let me point out that these folks have made contact with my office and provided us with a model ordinance, and I certainly do appreciate that. Fortunately enough, the City Council in years past had already had a section that could address smoking, and what this specifically does is expand it to all tobacco use, not just smoking, but it also includes more locations. And we have listed some of those, but we have also put in catch-all language in there that will certainly give staff the authority to turn around. And I think it talks about the depot area. It doesn't define anything in particular. It talks about the whole depot area in Section 22-32. It talks about parking lots. It talks about sidewalks and bordering the parking lots. Now, you've asked me something there that I frankly had not anticipated, and we can look into that because that's, but that is a recreation facility owned and operated by our Parks and Recreation Department.
You know, if we pass this based on this concept here, frankly, if we allow people to smoke as you walk on the sidewalk, walk in that facility, that's just, to me, is just probably the opposite of what we're trying to accomplish.
I think this has the teeth in it that you can certainly say that it's prohibitive going forward. Not only that, but it's also vapor cigarettes, that's e-cigarettes, that's also included, those products. The other thing I did want to point out, so you asked, the manager spoke about the enforcement here. One of the provisions that is in the enabling legislation that we are deleting from our current Chapter 22 ordinance, and that is the, under North County General Statute 130A-498, it specifically removes the authority of the city to charge people with this as a misdemeanor. So it's basically, you talked about a fine, that's really what we're left with there. To answer your question, I think you have enough teeth here to turn around and certainly could outlaw smoking on the sidewalk in front of our theater.
Mr. Huffman, would you, would it be helpful, I know staff may want to weigh in on this, to have some council consider a clarification to the depot and Paramount Theater area as an amendment?
Well, are they not under our umbrella for recreation parks?
And they are managed, the depot and the Paramount Theater are managed by the same staff team.
I mean, is that not sufficient?
Yeah, I think it is.
Yeah, that would stand to reason, and I think it's going to be inclusive as it is. The piece about voluntary compliance is a really important piece. I do believe that the burden of enforcement is going to be put on recreation parks. I think we are foolish to expect patrons to police one another when they put up a sign that says "No fighting." So I just would really encourage you training from your staff from that standpoint, because the lead's got to come from us. We can't expect it to be patron to patron without there being some unintended consequences.
So, Jim, we're not talking about students' arrests, students' arrest, man.
Since it's not a misdemeanor.
There's a few Barney Fies out there.
Any other questions from council?
If I could expound on Mr. Owen's question, I'd give you a good example of what he's talking about. At our Burlington Royals, Burlington Athletic Stadium, there's no smoking in that facility. However, all the smokers go right outside the front gate and smoke, and all the patrons that are coming in to go into the game goes, there's one gate, they go in, walk right through all that smoke. That will be prevented in the future because they will be, even though they're outside the gate, they'll still be on park property and everything, so they won't be able to gather right there in front of the gate. I've envisioned the same thing at the Paramount Theater. We can't legislate the whole sidewalk down there, but we can at least keep the entrance away, so a patron that arrives for a play or concert or whatever it is won't have to walk through a cloud of smoke to get to the facility. So I think that was a good thing that we, and we've had a lot of complaints about this. If you ever go to a ballgame over here at the stadium, I had a lot of complaints about the smokers, and it's a big group, unfortunately, that do that. So we're addressing those things. Thank you.
Any other council questions?
Question, Mayor. What is the proposed effective?
April the 1st?
April 1st, okay. If April 1st, I would make a motion that we amend City Code, Chapter 22, Article 2, Smoking and Pollution Control to be effective April 1, 2019.
Do I hear a second to that? Second. Any questions regarding the motion as stated? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you. That round is spoken. We appreciate your work. You can keep the jar of cigarette box if you'd like. Item 5 on our agenda, a public hearing has been set to consider adopting a resolution in support of Project Fiber's application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce building reuse grant to assist with renovation costs at 245 West Davis Street. This time, we recognize Economic Development Director Peter Bishop.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My pleasure to be here tonight with you. What we're hearing today and what you see before you is a request or a resolution to support an application to a state grant fund. Project Fiber is a telecommunications services company that has expressed interest in purchasing and renovating the former Bank of America building in downtown Burlington. This project would, and this is a slight change from what you may have seen before, this project would create 33 new jobs in a two-year period. Previously, you had seen 42 jobs over three years. That still will occur, but for the purposes of this grant, a two-year window is what we're looking at. So 33 jobs, new jobs in two years at the site. The average salary would be $70,455 for these jobs that will be created. This is a competitive project and a confidential project, thus the use of a project name rather than the company name. North Carolina and the city of Burlington are competing with the state of Indiana for this project, so the determination of this grant by City Council and the state will play a factor in the location decision of this company. The program that the applicant company, and of course, us being the applicant, rather, are interested in is the state building reuse program. We discussed this, myself and council, a little under two years ago in April regarding a different project, but just a quick rehash of what this program is. It was formerly a program of the North Carolina Rural Center that in 2013 by legislation and statute was transferred over to the North Carolina Department of Commerce. It grants dollars up to one-half of a building's renovation cost. Those funds are available to renovate a vacant building, a building that is not fully occupied by a tenant and wants to expand into the vacant portion of a building, and it also allows for building demolition if a company wanted to come in and demolish a building and construct a new building. There are certain priority industries that are focused on in priority geographical areas, so Tier 1 and 2 counties are the only eligible counties. Tier 3 counties, the larger ones, Mecklenburg and Wake, and Buncombe would not be eligible. Some of the industries that are focused on are corporate headquarters being one, which this project is, manufacturing, wholesale trade. It says electronic mail order. I assume that means Amazon. Computer systems, software, software reproducing and data processing. So there's a pretty specific set of industry codes that the city, or that the state, rather, is targeting with this grant program, and Project Fiber is one of those. An interesting difference of this program versus other state incentive programs that we discussed previously is the onus is on the local government to review the company's financials, the status of the company, and to do all clawback activities on behalf of the state. So in this grant, as opposed to others, the state writes a check to the city of Burlington for this grant, and then we distribute and monitor the activity of the grant. Our security in that case would be a grant agreement and a promissory note on the property. So the city of Burlington would actually be a second or subsidiary mortgagie. We would hold a mortgage on the property over the entire term of the grant. That mortgage would be released upon the terms of the grant being met at the end of those two years. So at the end of two years, if this project has created 33 jobs as they promised it would, we would be released from the grant requirements, and everything goes on. Some additional notes, as I mentioned, the jobs must be created and maintained for a two-year period. There's an 18-month period for the construction and the renovations that would occur on-site. My discussions with the company indicate that that would not be a problem. They would activate and mobilize immediately if awarded the grant and made a decision to come here, so they would likely be operational by summer. If the City Council approves this resolution, the city staff will complete our application and turn it into the North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Division. A decision will be made by February 21st by the Rural Infrastructure Authority, the large board that decides on these different grants at the state level, so we'll know within a month whether or not this project is going to be moving forward. This project does meet our downtown development goals for creating a, I'm sorry, vitality within that area, innovation within that area, creating new jobs and more people, more bodies as customers, as potential residents for the city. Certainly meets the city's economic development goals. This building has been vacant for about 36 months, I believe. In late 2015, early 2016, this bank branch closed, so although Zax has enjoyed the extra parking that they've had for a while, we'd like that not to be a vacant building any longer, and I believe we have a great opportunity to support a grant with just a small 5% cash match of the city to do this building reuse grant. And then one final point, this project would also be eligible for the Burlington Downtown Corporation's Building Upfit Grant of $25,000. So in addition to matching this grant and doing the grant administration, the city would also be assisting through our partner in Burlington Downtown Corporation for one of their outfit grants. So we're really covering this project on a couple of different fronts with some potential support. Wade Bodler with, representing the company, is here and able to answer any questions you have specifically of the company, and certainly I'm able to answer any questions that council may have.
Wade, did you want to make any comments?
I certainly can. Yes. Mayor, council members, so thanks for having me. Thanks for listening to, you know, Peter submit this application here. First and foremost, I want to say Peter's been great to work with. He's been awesome. I think I actually caught him. Can I disclose what you?
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay. I called this guy for the first time, and he answers the phone. Peter Bishop, how you doing? Wade Bodler, if we go through the, you know, through the cordials. Ring shopping. Guy's out ring shopping for his fiancee, answers the phone, and so he's all about this, you know, community development, this economic development. Clearly, there's nothing that'll stand in the way of him representing progress in that regard, so I thought that was an interesting anecdote. I was certainly surprised.
Hopefully, my fiancee's not watching or listening.
Or here, I don't think, that's good. That's why I asked you first. Anyway, again, my name is Wade Bodler. I'm representing this company. My older brother is 50% owner of this company. He and I are both North Carolina natives, raised in Meban, North Carolina. He started this company when he was 19 years old, and in the last 14 years has grown it to quite an establishment. We submitted financials that the city was able to review, and they can see that we were certainly capable of executing a project like this on our own, given the success that we've had, but we are very, very appreciative and grateful for you guys considering this. He has entered into, the company was merged in 2017, and so he now has a 50/50 business partner. That business partner is a little bit older, significantly, some might say, and from the Indiana area. He owns and operates the corporate headquarter building where his business was headquartered there in Indiana. My brother's company was headquartered here in Burlington. The two of them are trying to come together and fix a, you know, they want to localize everything. They want all the director positions to report to the same building. They want the two, the CEO and the COO, which is my brother and his business partner now, they want them to report to the same building. So this grant would be really, really helpful in us creating additional value for that other owner that does live in Indiana with his family. So it's been very helpful. He's been very excited about it in the conversations, and I just want to, again, say thank you and come in, Peter, for his efforts in helping us get this thing put together. We've done it in a really short timeframe. I think I first called Peter about 13 days ago or so at this point, so we have worked tirelessly to collect the necessary data for this, and again, I just want to say thank you for hearing us. Thanks.
Any questions from council before the public hearing?
From the city having a position on title, would it be a junior position?
It would be. But, Councilman Mayor, if I could bring your attention to the agreement before you, one of the things, just as it was with the beer works that you did the last year, that third from the bottom, whereas serves to somewhat limit the city's exposure, if you take a read through that, in the sense that you don't disperse any of the funds until, in fact, they have met the goals as far as job creation is concerned.
Right. Any other questions from council?
No.
You'll have a chance to respond to any questions after the public hearing, but we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? Sure.
Thank you, council members. My name is Jose Legria from 1717 Askew Street, and it's basically just a point of observation. It is said that the former Bank of America building has been closed for quite some time, but I would just like to point out to the council, do not forget the east side of Burlington. We don't have a bank on that part of town. We have one bank, and the rest is ATMs. So even though we are trying to revitalize downtown in the city of Burlington, our east part of the city is being forgotten with financial services, and maybe Mr. Fisher can look into some future grants for that part of town for some type of better serving our taxpayers from the east part of the city that have been forgotten in many, many, many ways, shapes, and forms. The other banks that we had in that part of the city have closed. Why? I don't know, but it would be a good reason to find out why there's no financial institutions other than Wood Forest Bank at Walmart. I cannot, I don't know the name of the other bank that is right there on Church Street, but the other ones are ATMs at the local businesses. So that was just a point of observation that I would like for the City Council to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak? Anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Any questions from council, or do I hear a motion?
I'd make a motion to adopt a resolution in support of Project Fiber's application to the NC Department of Commerce building reuse grant.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion as stated? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you, Mr. Bodler. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
This moves us. We've completed our public hearings. We have one item of new business this evening, item 6. City Council will consider a warning of contract in the amount of $1,160,394 to Carousels and Carvings, Inc., and to approve the Denzel Carousel Restoration Capital Project, Ordinance BA 2019-28, for the complete restoration of the Burlington City Park Denzel Carousel. This time, we recognize Assistant City Manager Rachel Cullen.
Good evening, and thank you. As you recall, I approached you all in November at the City Council Work Session, along with Blake Moyer, to give you a presentation about the necessary repair and restoration to Burlington's Denzel Carousel. Tonight, we come before you with a request to approve a contract and budget amendment to have that work completed. As a brief reminder, staff initiated a phased approach to carousel restoration in the offseason between 2017, 2018. Unfortunately, we had a major mechanical failure of an overhead vault bearing unit that occurred unexpectedly this summer, forcing the carousel to close. Repair to this unit requires complete disassembly of the carousel. Repair to this unit requires complete disassembly of the carousel, and staff therefore abandoned the phased approach recommendation in favor of the complete full mechanical and artistic Very few companies in the United States exist to do this type of specialized work, and after reviewing proposals and inquiring with over two dozen owners of these historic Denzel carousels across the country, it was obvious that the most qualified restorer of antique carousels in the nation is Carousel and Carvings, LLC, and they're located in Marion, Ohio. As you can see here from the presentation in November, some of the work that they've done recently in Raleigh, St. Louis, Philadelphia. For your consideration, before you tonight, you have a contract for full mechanical and artistic restoration of the carousel and an associated budget amendment. The contract is in the amount of $1,160,394, and as you can see before you, that is for the full repair refurbishment, all the mechanical upfitting to ADA standards, new drive train, and many more pieces for that full restoration to get this thing back to its original glory. The total project represents $1,211,100 investment, and that includes insurance, electrical work, project monitoring. The restoration is scheduled to be complete March 2021, if we approve this contract. Meanwhile, while this carousel is in Ohio being repaired, staff will begin to assess the future of the carousel's shelter. At a minimum, the structure requires some structural improvements. Other options include evaluating the feasibility of glassing the structure or even relocating it to prevent flooding. It isn't a floodplain right now, or even allow additional uses, meetings, and draws to this gem that we own. These recommendations will come before you later this year as we assess that feasibility and give you options on what to do with that carousel shelter. I'm happy to respond to any questions that you might have, but do respectfully request the council award the carousel restoration contract to Carousel and Carvings pending fulfillment of all insurance requirements and approve the associated budget amendment.
I've got a couple of questions about this. Peggy, I just want to be sure. You know, we're fast approaching the point, but it's, we've already approached it. This is not really a recreation ride. This is a piece of art. Is that a fair statement?
Very fair statement.
Estimated value when it's complete, do we have any idea what the value of--
Three and a half to four million.
So we're talking about a $4 million piece of art, one of--
Twenty-six.
One of 26. Sitting in a quasi-flood zone, and I'm sure Alan Crouch and his staff probably go in panic mode every time there is a rain event, and I'm sure Peggy goes into panic mode every time there's a rain event. So I guess my point is, from my standpoint, I've been thinking about this a lot. I'm making a bones about the fact that I like fiduciary responsibility, and we've got $1.2 million we're getting ready to spend on a carousel. Carousel, but it's a piece of art, so it's an investment. This is not a repair. This is an investment, but we don't have an adequate place to keep this investment based on the value that it is and the money that we're spending. So you alluded to the fact that we're going to have to redo the facility that it's housed in, which is basically--
At the very least.
--an overblown carport with roll-up doors.
A historic carport.
And it's got to be moved. It's got to be moved. I, for one, wouldn't vote for the money if we're not planning on moving it, because it's risk beyond what I could comprehend. But here's what I would like to suggest. We're also talking about, at the same time, doing some construction adjacent to the pyramid. Go back to your Indiana, your Ohio picture up there, right there. We saw some wonderful structures across the country, the one in the top right specifically. Glassed in, they look really nice. We're going to be doing something, the old Moorfield Florist building anyway. I would like to at least explore the thought process of perhaps even moving it downtown. We've got to build that facility regardless. Downtown needs a catalyst. Would you agree?
I do.
And I do not think it's prudent to take away a piece of recreation that our children enjoy, and certainly, being in City Park, we can purchase a routine carousel for there, one that is truly a recreation. But let's take this piece of art and treat it like it's a piece of art, and put it where it's safe, put it where it's in a controlled environment from the standpoint of climate, and really take care of it, and then perhaps it might even be a little bit of draw, maybe even a regional draw, maybe if marketed correctly. There's an Amtrak station right across there. People might take a train and come look at a carousel. It's certainly going to help downtown. We've got some folks here tonight that are interested in downtown. We've got a new apartment complex getting ready to, at least later on in the year, be leasing. Downtown's at the verge of doing something pretty unique. There's a lot that's worked hard on it, so that's my sales pitch, but I really think we should consider this thing as a concept and not just as a task, an administrative task, to approve. A concept of how we're going to preserve a piece of art, stimulate downtown by preservation of that piece of art, adjacent to a building that we're going to have to build anyway, in response to a building that we're going to have to build anyway.
We did have some very preliminary discussions with the state because this is on the historic register, and they didn't see any major prohibitions to moving it to the downtown area versus City Park, so I think we could work through those processes.
I don't mean to disagree, but I will.
That's fine.
I think, you know, Jim's concept does make a lot of sense, but I think there has to be another option to look at, and that would be to look at the City Park property in terms of the floodplain itself and see if there's another option of locating this particular structure at that park. I think that would be substantial, well, I think there's a lot of history here, which I'm not sure we want to do this. The carousel is part of, sure, it indeed is an art structure. Pullman Park did theirs, still in Pullman Park. I think that the concept of looking at the whole park in that particular area in reference to flow of water, how we could rearrange some things there, I believe that the carousel was part of everything else that goes there, the train, the other parts of the activity, the playground, the kids, that type of thing. So I understand your philosophy, and again, I'm saying it shouldn't work, but I think we need to take a hard look at where we should, what we should do with it. Obviously, I think we need to go ahead and get it repaired and renovated, but I think making a decision on what we're going to do, we should take some real study. I'm not sure who should do that, but I believe that that's another option to consider where it will go. This structure will require significant space. This is just not the space for the structure itself, it's what goes around that structure in terms of people moving and things of that nature, parking. And, you know, so whatever we do, I think it needs to be looked at in terms of what's best for the city and its citizens. It's pretty substantial to move a thing like the City Park. It's pretty substantial to move it to Ohio, but--
It's coming home.
I just agree that it shouldn't be where it's at.
And I think what we can do is examine, what can we do to protect it from flooding in its current location? What other options are there on the City Park campus? And what does downtown look like? What are the associated costs? And then let you guys make some decisions once you've got the feasibility.
We've got two years. This is going to be a two-year project, but I, for one, no matter what, would not vote for this money to leave it where it's at. I want to be real clear about that. It just makes no sense. It's going to have to be relocated or elevated to a point that it's going to be safe. Let me ask you a question, Senator.
Wreckon Park said you got a few feet away, but it's never flooded.
One of the last drains that we had, water came, you could see the water line under the doors, and halfway between the doors and the edge of the carousel. Now, that carousel is up six inches off the ground, so that, I mean, in my tenure here at the city, the water has come under the doors.
My question on that is, this is been a pretty rainy season, I think, so record is it not? You know, we've got to have some really smart engineers somewhere around the state that can, you know, instead of just saying it's got to be moved, you may, but can indeed the elevation of that particular area be changed and be modified?
Yeah.
I'd like to at least take a look at that if we could. It could certainly be elevated.
Yeah, I think those three options, grading it above floodplain, moving it to another location on that campus or downtown, can definitely be explored.
In my 44 years here, I've never seen water in that carousel.
Appreciate y'all's comments.
You know, to add to that, though, I have seen us put sandbags out. That's something. We wouldn't be putting sandbags out if we weren't worried about it, and I do know that our insurance mentions it often. I've heard that, but-- On more than one occasion.
I will share, I had a good conversation last week with Mayor McFarland regarding their carousel, and she values that as a treasure. So she said, do what you need to, but it's worth investing in.
And their staff has been helpful in providing feedback about Carousel and Carvings and the work they did for them.
Just to clarify, the upper left corner is the Pullman Park Carousel in Raleigh.
And that, actually, that facility was renovated the last time that we made our first major renovation, and that was sort of the key to the major renovation a little bit after that of Pullman Park, which changed the entire park concept there.
I do want to clarify, Rachel, you had a point about the drive train replacement, and I think during the presentation, we are still doing a major drive train outfit that will reduce some of the moving parts and make this more durable installation. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's going to standardize the operation, is my understanding, but we will keep the historic--
All the pieces will still be there, but the operation will be much easier to maintain.
Train staff, yes.
So the pieces of art can continue to actually be used without worrying.
That's absolutely correct. They'll still be intact as far as the historic value, but the operating system will just be modernized, so that it's not as much of a strain on it.
To me, the neat part about this is a piece of art that people can use and enjoy and just might look at.
Correct.
It's pretty special.
That's a different, that's a little different philosophy. Like an antique car.
Yeah.
All right. Any further questions from council, or do I hear a motion regarding item 6?
Well, I'll make the motion that we go forth with the, to award the contract. Well, let me step back a minute. You said the Carousel and Carvings was by far the company that appears to be the best in this particular type of work.
Yes, sir.
Who else did we look at, or are there other ones that we researched?
There were two prolific carousel restorers that we could find through Blake's research of the other Denzel owners. Brass Ring Carousel Company's proprietor passed away, and there's ownership change. I think his son's taking over.
Is it Western Train, is that the--
Western Train did submit a proposal. We got proposals from both Carousel and Carvings, and Western Train reviewed those. Carousel and Carvings references like work were significantly better than Western Train Company. I think staff feels confident that that's the best dealer available.
Well, I go forward with the motion there, that I started, that we award a contract to Carousel and Carvings and to approve the restoration. Now, one thing I would bang up is, we indicate that this would be prepared and ready to go in 2021. I would ask that in that contract that we get some specifics on that and some damage if not, because once you start advertising this thing's going to be open in March of 2021, and come April and May, if it's not open, it's going to be an awful lot of issues that we're going to deal with.
And I think we're going to have to consider the options that we choose for the carousel house and when that can be vetted, constructed, and ready to go for the new carousel to go in it. So that'll play some role too, and when it's open to the public again. I think the restoration, they've committed to have that done for us by March 15th, 2021.
Well, I would think in our information we provide, that that needs to be noted, that, you know, when it would actually, people want to know when they can use it, not, you know, when it would be here sitting and not.
Absolutely.
And to approve the budget.
Pardon me?
And to approve the budget.
And approve the budget amendment, yes.
Do I hear a second? Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you very much. That concludes our long agenda this evening. We had no one sign up for public comment. Do I hear any city council comments? All right. Do I hear a motion, Senator?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you everyone for coming tonight.